All right, let's call this meeting to order. It is still 6:00 PM, May 21st, the Dune City Council Regular Session. All of our councilor here, and please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to your flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, item four, consideration of the agenda. Does anyone have anything that we need to change, delete, remove? Anything? Okay. Item five is consideration of consent agenda.
Do you want to approve the agenda?
Sure, let's do that.
I approve the agenda.
Thank you. All opposed in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Any opposed? I think that was unanimous. Thank you, Susan. Okay, item five is consent agenda. They can be, they are considered routine business by Dune City Council, can be approved by one motion. No separate discussion unless we pull something for discussion. I think we have two items to discuss briefly. Items five, C and D, correct?
I had two items in one of the receipts along the bills that I talked to Lila about. And I was going to, see, the first one was, it was in the receipts. It was Miller Handicapped Services. It says overpayment, it's really a refund because they didn't do the work, so.
Okay.
And the other one that's in the receipts, there is one on page two. At the top of the page, there's a building code within the short-term rentals that needs to be pulled out and put in building codes. So Lila knows about both of those, and she will correct those.
Okay.
So I move that we.
So the charges are here, they just showed up in the wrong article?
They're in the wrong place, so she will make sure they're in the right place and put books. And for those amendments, I move to approve.
The whole consent agenda?
Yes.
Thank you. Anybody want a second act?
I'll second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Did you vote? All right, that's unanimous, thank you. Next is announcements of correspondence.
Yes, I just wanted to make, say that Trident's, they're trying to give me an update as to where they're going to be working in the city, so we all know where they are. So next week they should be on Cloud Nine, and then the next street's possibly Fordway or Jensen. And they usually work on Mondays.
Trident.
Trident there doing the ditch maintenance, the right thing.
Yeah, clearing ditches and everything. All right, thank you.
I have one more. Okay.
Okay, yeah.
Just that we're having the Lane County Senior Disability Services, their van, their truck, mobile unit, will be here on June 16th, which is a Monday, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. They're going to be out here in the parking lot to help anybody who needs to sign up for any kind of services. So things like SNAP, things like, I need help with home care, things like that. So they're going to be out here.
And they have the transportation for medical from the coast to Jean. They have a number of services that they'll provide out here, so, all right.
I lied, I have one more.
Okay, go ahead.
Just that the ODOT flight is coming. And they're, date is, what's the date? The 14th, I believe, of June, Saturday.
Yeah.
They're going to be coming to the Silk Coast Ramp. The pilot will be David Wellman, and they are bringing, you know, they're just doing their test runs. So they're leaving some items. It's going to be at 10:00 AM, it's the estimated time of arrival.
All right. Okay, mayors report, I have a couple of things. Our audit for last fiscal year is nearing completion, and we're looking at next year already because it's due at the end of the year. So as soon as the fiscal year ends in June, and as soon as we have any fund balances and that sort of thing, we'll be working on next year. And then we've got two maps I want to show off. Right now, these are demo link, Lane Council of Government, GIS group, put these together. So the first is all the city water rights, not all water rights in the city, but everything that is a city water right. So all the blue dots are those points of diversion and/or point of use. So you can, we click on one, Chris picked one, it's interactive. You can zoom in to the parcels, but off to the right, you just pick one, and it tells you it's point of diversion number 309. That is the stuff that comes from the state. So if you have, if you have all that paperwork, or you go to the state and do research, they'll tell you, yeah, you're on this big list, and you're 309. It's got the name of the owner. This is all public information, but it's combined state water rights, county ownership, and mapping data. So you've got the APN number, or the map lot number, the property address, the local common property address, and then for our case, whether it has a fish screen or not, because everything on the city's list has to have a fish screen, it's got the coordinates that the state requires now in Latin long, and then the township section range and quarter section, and that's something else the state requires. So there's a laundry list of things we have to update anytime there's a permit amendment. And we've gotten, this big spreadsheet and the map are pretty much, we believe, 100% exactly the same. And because of the efforts, all of our permits have been extended, right? The last one was extended officially. We are not overdue on anything, and one of the next steps is apply it for beneficial use for that. I think there's 208 points of diversion and 240-some users, correct? So that would make those permanent, because we now have all the records up to date, and all of them have been in place. And that's an enormous step. But, you know, Lila's done a ton of work, the state staff's been really helpful with this. And we've been doing this with our own labor. We found we were moving forward quicker without our consultant. So it saved quite a bit of money as well, because the attorney and the water rights staff are, the less expensive guy's 140 bucks an hour, and the attorneys can triple that, so the bill's out of the ordinary. So anyway, that's interactive, and we're going to get it on our webpage. So you'll be able to go there. These are city water rights. Ultimately, we're working on another map with LCAG for all. So we could have different colored dot if it's a well, different color dot if it's a surface water that you require yourself, and ultimately probably all those that are on Silk Coast as well, like City Hall has its own water right on Silk Coast, and doesn't show up on this one, so. Anyway, and then we have another. So they got the whole map of the city drawn, so this is the, right now it's fabulous. We have all the short-term rentals, it's a common question, you know, is there a permit? Everything that's permitted is on the list, it's now on this map. So this is everything that we have a permit issued for currently. Same information, it's real time. If you, if you click on a map dot, it will give you the owner of the property, and if they use a management company, it will give you the management company. So if you need to look something up, it should be a lot easier to find graphically. You know, if you know where you live, and you know they're next door, or down the hill, or whatever, and it tells you, in this case, it's a vecasa managed property, and they've got the phone number on there. So again, it's all public stuff. Right now, it's on a list you have to sort through. Now it'll be graphical, and we'll get those on the website. And they get updated in real time. If ownership changes through the county, that'll get reflected. If it's short-term rental that goes off the market, or the owner changes or whatever, that will be updated as well, so. So that's all I had. Any questions on that stuff? Pretty exciting. We, we did a subscription with Lane Council of Government, and they said, you have 12 hours of mapping services. We now have a contract for additional services if we need something, but I don't even think we've run out of the 12 hours. They, they were very efficient.
We just did.
Okay, so we basically have 12 hours with all that effort. And we also have a contract for planning as well. We talked about planning at the last meeting, we have a contract for planning. So if we need a planner, they've got an expert that will work at an hourly rate, so. We've got those in place. Permit report is in the packet. From April 15th to May 19th? Any questions on any of those? There are no short-term rental applications in review right now. Where are we at, 32? 32 out of a max of, we said at 35, so we have yet to get to 35. Come on?
Yes.
Okay, all right. And then, starting this meeting, we've got code enforcement report. So there's a lot of detail this month. We're going to shorten this to be more like a permit report, because there's addresses. Not all these addresses were complaints. A lot of these were, you know, checking on things and getting familiar with the community. So Igor's going to have to take the notes every night and responding to complaints. So we'll format this more like the building report to say, you know, how many, how many visits, how many complaints, how many citations, or whatever is appropriate on the list, and we'll continue to report on that, so. For better or for worse, Igor started at probably official kickoff to tourist season with the roadie festival. We have lots of visitors. Not all of them were quiet.
Just a few problems.
Yeah, I'll leave that alone.
But it's not an ongoing problem, this is only for roadies.
I hope.
We've got some.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah, of course.
So for my benefit, are you Igor?
Yes, I am.
Nice to meet you.
Lovely to meet you.
And this is a nice review.
Yeah, we introduced them at the last council meeting, you just started.
These are great reports, thank you. So if a citizen calls in a complaint, do we have any feedback process to that citizen?
Yeah, we have the complaint form online for anything code-related, really. And then, yes, Pam and Igor follow up. So he's a lot of evenings, Pam's of days, and then they coordinate and overlap. So yeah, everybody gets a phone call, and you know that.
Okay, and then question number two would be, if you find somebody who's operating a short-term rental, it's not permitted, what's the next course of action?
I think for non-permitted is a citation, right? That was something we went through before, we didn't want to encourage that behavior. The fine is the same as the application fee. So yeah, so if it's a confirmed rental without, and I know you found one that's listed on a rental webpage, but there's no activity. So we don't know if they're optimistic, or if it's from way back when, but there hasn't been any activity. There hasn't been a rent for that.
There should have been two. But one of them's totally blocked out on all the sites for Airbnb.
Okay.
But it's still in that site.
Okay.
An Airbnb. And the other one, actually, you just can't book any dates, but they're not crossed out.
Got you.
So to speak.
So they've got their listing, that's not available.
Just in case, if I see any activity.
Go ahead, very good.
So who reaches out to that property? Is it Igor, or Pam, or you?
If it's.
If you find out there's a short-term rental?
Oh yeah, Igor, yeah.
Very good. So we'll come to a resolution.
Yep, and then if they're, if they believe they were cited erroneously, they can field the city council.
Okay, very good.
All right, any other questions on that? All right, we moved citizens' input to the end of the agenda. Is there anything, anybody? We can, we have a couple of folks in the audience. Did you guys want to speak? You want to speak now, or?
No, we have nothing at this time.
Okay, very good. Jeanie?
Well, I'm just concerned about what may or may not be passed, and I can speak in the end because I'm waiting to find out what I need to do.
And we have two public hearings, so they both have opportunities to speak. If you've got questions about the actual, that's in both of the, the two next items, so, okay.
Yeah, I tried to attend the last, but I was very confused, even when I was told it was cancellation. I showed up, and I thought we're having a meeting tomorrow, so it's been confusing.
All right, so next item, item eight, we've got two public hearings tonight. And we actually have the first and second reading, so bear with me. I have a script to read, and there is an opportunity to ask questions or comment on this if you have any. The first, in layman's terms, is building fees. It's a technology fee on all of our building fees. This 100% goes to, well, we collect it. It pays the credit card fees, and it pays basically for electronic transactions. Northwest Code is going to 100% electronics and middle. And they pick the bank to process the credit cards, because all that data, it populates our database for their reasons. It's just a pass through for us. It comes into effect in June, whether we pass this or not. So this is basically, does Dune City subsidize every permit? Or does Dune City just collect that fee because we're going to incur the cost? So Northwest Code does this in, what, 13 cities and a couple of counties? So the state had to review this as well, the building folks, they've all been notified. There was legal notice in the paper, and all the other communities are doing the same. So this affects a building permit after June, right?
June 12th.
June 12th, so. Without any more of my rambling, I will jump into the script. This is Resolution Series 2025, number one. A proposed resolution requires two readings before it's enacted. City Charter, Section 34, three, subsection three, provides that both readings may be read by title only. A, if no council member present at the meeting requests it to be read in full, or B, a copy of the resolution is provided for each member, and all requirements for posting and advertising have been met. We already meet, does anybody want me to read the entire resolution? It's in your packet, it's on the internet.
All right, I can read Resolution Two. That one, not that one.
Yes. I see what you mean. Our agenda item is correct, it's posted correctly, it's, it's series two. We've got series one, I have too much script. Thank you. And it says that on my blank page to sign, but we'll fix that before signing. Anyone desire to read the whole thing? Any, no one? City reporter, have all requirements for posting and advertising been met?
Yes.
Does any councillor desire, oh, I just asked, does any councillor desire the resolution to be read in full? Thank you. I would entertain a motion to read the resolution by title only.
Salute.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, it's unanimous, so I will read the Resolution Series 2025, number two, by title only. A resolution establishing fees and charges for building code division transactions and establishing an effective date. I will now open this agenda item for public hearing at 6:18. City reporter, have you received any written testimony to be read into the record?
No.
Do we have anyone that would like to speak on this item? Specific to the building fee, or the, this whole item on fees? Anyone? Please?
I just have a question. So the fees that are listed here, are these updated fees of the speed?
Yes.
Okay, so, okay. And I'll just, yeah, okay.
So some are adjusted, and then plus the 5% technology fee?
Okay.
Thank you, good question. Any other questions? If not, I will close the public hearing at 6:90. Councillors, do you have any further questions for staff? You?
No.
Melissa?
No.
To?
No.
Rich?
Nope.
To?
Nope, sorry.
Nope.
Okay. I would entertain a motion to amend, oh, sorry. So we don't have any adjustments, right? I will now, sorry. This does amend, not the language, it's the resolution. I will entertain a motion to amend the language of Resolution Series 2025, number two, as presented in. We have no resolutions, so I need a motion to approve as published.
Salute.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. I will now entertain a motion to have a second reading of Resolution Series 2025, number two, by title only. So I need a motion to read the title only. Thank you. Thank you, Rich. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. I will do the second reading of Resolution Series 2025, number two, by title only. A resolution establishing fees and charges for building code division transactions and establishing an effective date. I will now entertain a motion to accept the wording for Resolution Series 2025, number two, as presented, and to adopt and pass Resolution Series 2025, number two. Need a motion? Thank you.
Second.
And this one, we need a roll call, though. So, Duke, in favor or opposed?
Aye.
Okay, Melissa?
Aye.
Susan?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Larry?
Aye.
Thank you. That's unanimous. Resolution in Series 2025, number two, is hereby adopted and will become effective May 21st, 2025. Thank you. Now we will go to the next item, B, Central Lincoln PEB franchise agreements. We've had some discussion about this in the past. It's a complete rewrite, was reviewed extensively by Central Lincoln and our attorney. At this point, I don't believe there's anything in here that is detrimental to the city. There's no cost implications or changes, but they did update insurance and permitting requirements within the state limits in our favor, if you will. Because a lot of this was, they were exempt from everything, and we told them they weren't, and they said, okay, so. So the entire agreement is in the packet. Mine is marked draft, but that was the last draft. So this is the one that we discussed at a previous meeting. Had all our attorney, the attorney was happy, we were happy. So draft will be removed, obviously, before the signing, but the words are all in the packet and published that way. So I will get back to the script. This is ordinance number 271. A proposed charter, sorry, a proposed resolution requiring two readings before it's enacted. City Charter, Section 34, subsection three, provides that both readings may be read by title only. If A, no council member present at the meeting requests it to be read in full, or B, a copy of the ordinance is provided for each member, and all requirements for posting and advertising have been met. Have all requirements for posting and advertising been met?
Yes.
Thank you. Does any councillor desire the ordinance to be read in full? No? All right. I will entertain a motion to read the ordinance by title only.
Salute.
Thank you.
Seven.
I'll get that. I can hear that, I see. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. I will read ordinance 271 by title only. An ordinance granting to Central Lincoln People's Utility District, a municipal corporation, its successors, and assigns an exclusive franchise to construct, maintain, and operate an electric utility along streets and other public ways in the city of Dune City, and repealing ordinance number one, seven. I will now open this item for public hearing at 6:24. City reporter, have you received any written testimony to be read into the? You know, I didn't ask on the first one, do we have anyone online? Okay. Okay. And do we have? Would anyone like to speak specifically to the Central Lincoln franchise agreement? Okay.
Well.
Go ahead.
I would like to speak simply in the, you know, I continue to be confounded about how business is going here. You say nobody's written in, nobody's complaining. Most of us didn't even know. I went to great effort to find out when this meeting would ever be. I don't, a lot of people don't have computers. And although, I was told by Lila today, this was in the paper, in the most miserable, tiny lettering at the very end of the paper, hidden where, oh, sure, roadie weekend, a lot of people are busy and didn't read it. Also, Westlake was taken over, and the Dune City sign was put up on Fourth of July weekend. I just feel like things have always been done kind of under the cloak of darkness. And the reason why no one's writing and no one came is they don't know what they're doing.
Can we stick to comments on the ordinance?
Yes, well, I would just say, I don't know how it is. You should be able to collect part of the fee that we all have to pay for electricity. What do you do for us? I mean, we don't, you don't provide water, you don't provide sanitation. This is just another way to gouge the people who live here. So that's what I have to say.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right, seeing none. I will close the public hearing at 6:26. Councillors, do you have further questions for staff? You?
No.
Melissa?
No.
To? Rich?
Yes.
Larry? Yes, please.
So my experience with Central Lincoln and other part of the area here is that when they changed out a utility pole, it'd take forever to take out the old pole. And there are still a few poles in our community where they put up the new pole and move the electricity when they cut it off halfway up. And ostensibly, that used to do cable companies and other, not to come along and move that. And in North Florence, it took us three years to get those ISOs removed. So I'm wondering, what is our relationship with Central Lincoln vis a vis? And some of the language that's in here is about them using appropriate dispatch to cause less inconvenience to the community and the citizens. But I think it's equally important that, you know, in the first place, I wish everything was on the ground.
Sure.
But it's not going to be.
Correct.
But when it is area, we not have two poles in the same location because they have to come back to motivate their people who are releasing space on their pole to move it to the new pole, and then get the other pole out of the ground. It just seems to me like that's something that should be a priority for us.
Our issue here has been the charter communications that previously.
Right.
That has been, at Central Lincoln, has been a charter.
I understand, but Central Lincoln is releasing that space to charter. I'm not, Central Lincoln is the person that I had to speak to.
Yeah.
I had to talk to several of the board of directors members. And it was only after I did that, that we actually saw some action on removing old poles, and putting pressure on charter, whoever else to do the service over, so. That is a concern of mine, about how we can operate, agree with the number two.
Well, let me speak to that one first.
Sure.
We've met with our government affairs guy a number of times, and he's been very responsive. So if we have a specific, I mean, he's been great. We've gotten really good service when we report to streetlights or anything like that, because they also own the streetlights. We pay a flat rate for streetlight, and so they've been great about following up there, so.
Okay.
So so far, so good. I don't know of any real instances here, but that's not a concern I've seen that happen.
That's true.
Right now, in front of the city hall out here, charters, length fell down, and it was down for about two weeks before they ever came to put it back up, so. Central Lincoln called them, they called them, they called them, but it's, it's been, charter has been the problem.
So the second concern I have is, I saw either them or their subcontractor come in and just butcher some trees to get, you know, clearance to power lines. And I'm wondering how much notice or consideration they're giving to a homeowner before they just come through and whack.
I don't think you.
My experience hasn't been good, the reason I bring it up, it hasn't been good, because they actually had the crease that they will have come down from Newport, which is all part of Central Lincoln.
Yeah.
And they'll come down and just. And they'll come down and just, and it leaves just really a tremendous eyesore. So in both cases, my concern is about how it looks when they're done.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, you can accomplish the goal, but.
That's obviously a secondary concern, there's public safety is number one, but.
Right.
I think, I think in every case where the trees are trimmed, someone's tree or naturally they've grown in the right way and in the easement.
And sometimes that can't, that can't be avoided, even if it's not a matter of, but.
Yeah.
I've seen some pretty bad butcher jobs.
They don't hold back when it's power lines.
Well, they're not.
Even, even right communications lines.
Yeah.
Well, it's anything on that.
They're not our worst item.
So just, just.
Somebody that hired our, but yeah, they're just like, if it's ten feet, it's ten feet. And it's.
I agree, correct.
It's taught and clear.
Someone even went to on the one-on-one to go back through and replant rhododendrons when they took them all out.
I, I had no luck at all with Central Lincoln's management until I talked to Judy, the, the center butchers.
Yeah.
And then they did something.
Okay.
So I'm not impressed.
You know, and I don't, I guess, what, what's the other alternative?
Right.
Because I don't think it's really a franchise agreement.
They promised, they said, we'll have it out in two days, two years later, they're still.
So, so you just, uh, you know, send them a letter that you're going to revoke their, uh.
No, I just think if you're negotiating an agreement with them, which we have, and you change language to benefit us.
Well, I think, and in our case, we're a city. In your past experience, you were an HOA and a county, right? Unincorporated county.
Correct.
So we actually have the agreement with them and we have had really responsive, you know, when we asked.
That's good, well, I hope we use that.
I hope so too.
I hope we use that word, which.
Yeah.
It would be better for us if they quickly move through and finish the job rather than leaving it half, half completed. So, that's all I have.
Okay. Thank you, any other, well, no, that was the end of the table. Okay, I will entertain a motion. Let's see, entertain a motion to have a second reading of ordinance two seventy one by title only.
Second.
Oh, sorry. No, I'm good, right? Because we don't have any amendments, so, thank you, Susan and Rich. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. I will read this a second time. Uh, an ordinance granting to Central Lincoln People's Utility District, a municipal corporation, its successors and assigns an exclusive franchise to construct, maintain and operate an electric utility along streets and other public ways in the city of Dune City and repealing ordinance one seven. I will now entertain a motion to accept the wording for ordinance two seventy one as presented and to adopt and pass ordinance two seventy one.
So moved.
Thank you. I'll, oh, wait a minute, I think this is my voice going up. Uh, yes. Okay. All those in favor? Duke?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Susan? Rich?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Larry?
Aye.
Thank you. Uh, ordinance two seventy one is hereby adopted and will become effective May twenty first, two thousand twenty five. Okay. Alright, next item in citizen's input on anything not on the agenda. Did you have anything else that you wanted to say, Ms. Jacksons?
Well, yes, I, I very much agree with, uh, much of what, uh, Mr. uh, just said. I appreciate you saying those things. I am concerned that, once again, is the council or gets to decide whether or not things are read by title only. Don't people in the community deserve a reading? We come here, we actually want to know. So if I told them, I turn, if I could say, yes, I would like it read. Because I came in, I spent five dollars today to get two copies of material that I was told would be pertinent for tonight. But, um, I, half of what you're talking about, I don't really see here. And I don't really know the story. And I think if people really knew what was going on and how much fees are going up and how many changes are happening, they would be here. But there's not.
Could I ask a question?
Yeah.
How much are fees going up?
Well, from, you know, what's weird is I got a piece of paper, now I'm trying to find it. It looked like things were going up from one hundred dollars for a lot of things to two fifty. And I, the old ordinance two fifty nine that was being worked up, we were so concerned because things were going to go up as much as four to five times what they were. And certainly short-term rentals have gone way up. And I just think before you increase the fees to the citizens, we should be able to understand what's happening. And reading by title only might be great for you guys because you, you know what it is. I, I'm not even sure I have a proper copy of it because I.
I can assure you have a proper copy. You can have mine if you'd like.
Well, then, I would like to know how much fees are going up if you say I don't know. Well, how much? Am I mistaken?
The only new fee is the five percent technology fee and the credit card is about three percent of that, of the five. So they're going to a hundred percent online submissions, which actually, I've been through this before. Ultimately saves people a lot of time and money because right now you have to mail or bring in printed copies, multiple sets, and they get distributed to the review folks and they bring us a setback. They're going to a hundred percent electronic. It ultimately saves all that reproduction cost and the courier cost. And for that, they pays five percent. So, um, that's really the new fee. The others are adjustments to things that they, basically it's a cost recovery.
They all need this money to keep operating.
No, we do not. The city doesn't gain any money from, the building fees go all the Northwest Code. It's basically a break even proposition. We charge plan check, review and inspection, whatever it costs to provide the service. Check the budget every year, it's an enterprise fund, it pays its own way.
Once again, the budget has been very flawed through the years, so I just, I, I know you have a different perspective than I do, you know. I also love this area. I was born and raised here, I love it here. My family's lived through generations. Uh, but I just feel like we're being nibbled and dimed to death because you said, oh, no, you don't want to be this terrible national park. I would so much rather we've been in a national park than what's happening to us today. Obviously, all you guys want to do is develop, develop, develop and make money. Even though the citizens have told you time and again, that that is not what they're interested in.
Okay. Thank you, anyone else?
Thank you.
Fee, no one? I don't believe we have any need for an executive session tonight. Uh, with due, for the order, Duke, you had, you had something you wanted to talk about when everybody was.
Well, I'll just, I, you know, the last good order, it says, your council will suggest that staff no longer send out septic reminders until council has, uh, readdressed the septic ordinance. I want, I'll clarify that.
Okay.
And I do want to look at sending out the notifications.
Okay.
I really don't want to readdress the septic ordinance. I spent ten years doing that, spent thousands of dollars. And I think it is written as about as good as it can be written. It's codified, I don't want to get in battle in that. But after, from what I know of the septic ordinance that we have, I do not believe that we are obligated to send out notices, how we send them out now. And then especially after we send a notice out, then send it out, the lake thing, and then the next thing after that, get your papers. And I'm talking from personal experience. So what I, what I, my good in the order is that I was, then I didn't do it last time because we weren't all here. I would like to, um, address the whole council and just give them time to think about that issue. If sending out the, the, they feel that sending out the notices is something that they want to continue on.
Sure.
And then the next, the next meeting, I'll ask to have it put on a, the agenda for a discussion and action.
Okay, and I think, I wasn't here for that original, but I read the old meeting minutes and, uh, and then the challenge to the ordinance and the Luba remanding it back to the city. And so I read all that, interesting meeting. So I think there's probably two things if we want to visit the ordinance, because I agree. The, the nuts and bolts are fine.
Mm-hmm.
Satisfied Luba, satisfies the state and the county.
I think we have.
And, and Lila and I, we were fresh out of eyes and ears because we weren't here for all that. And so we've talked to the county and the, the Lane County sanitation folks and the state. And they said, you know, you have things that you're not required to do that you put in your ordinance.
Right.
We talked about the, uh, doing it yourself. And there is an inspection manual out there. We have an example of a really good one. But right now, ours is you have to do it a certain way with a certain form.
Right.
So there's a couple of things. Allow the self-certification, not require a certain form, so that, because there's other examples out there. And that free, that, that makes another company that, to our knowledge, is less expensive, that could participate in this space. And the third is, those notices should be whatever that it said in the ordinance, that it's per the Oregon State University's recommendation. And I agree with you, all of them come back and say, I'll see you in five years, even though, because I have the same experience, I haven't gotten a letter yet. But single guy with a, a twelve hundred or fifteen hundred gallon system that says you should be about fourteen years. And my letter, because I just bought the house two years ago, it says five years. And mine certainly will not be full in five years. Or even the sixty percent or whatever they recommend.
And that's why I think bringing up for people to sit down and talk to their families and their neighbors and see what they think, so we can have this discussion. Because I can bring up several examples in the discussion time, why I think this would be a good idea to stop doing that. And that's just, that's just one.
Sure.
You know, there's, there's, there's quite a few more.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
Then I think, you know, and time for staff and all that other stuff, you get into, they're just, so the counselors can think about it, talk to their neighbors, whatever they want.
Yeah, I think the, uh, the looking at the chart, there's five extra minutes upfront, right? When that work's done and you say, well, it's currently occupied by two people, we're going to put you in there for a reminder in twelve years. Because right now, all the service companies just say, I recommend it's done in five years.
It sounds, it sounds good, but it's not working that way at all.
Right.
And like we talked about the cash counter thing and all of that, well, we're, we're the cow.
Right, we're not getting cash out of that.
No.
No, okay, understood, nice, thank you. Melissa?
Nothing to talk about. I don't think there is no talking that, but I have to say I agree with the millionaires review.
I do too. Uh, Susan? Thank you, Rich?
Uh, I, I would agree with Duke and, and I think that we need to look at, uh, getting, uh, something put in place that the salt, uh, check.
I agree, there's some good info out there. I mean, it wouldn't be unique and the state said, doesn't violate state either. The state's like, you can do, you, you're allowed to do that. We've just, ours ended up very narrow.
I mean, an individual can go out there and, and pull their own tank lid, they can take their own pictures, they can take their own measurements.
All they charge you to make a dip stick out of, out of a six dollar or a five dollar piece of PVC.
Yeah. The, the other one that I think that we need to consider doing the same type of thing with as well is, uh, this, uh, wellhead screen protection, uh, stuff that's costing these people, uh, tons of money that the state doesn't even, they don't even care about whether or not you even have it on there after it's been put on.
Well, or. Fish, or pump.
The pump.
Pump, okay. We're still looking into that.
Yeah. But I mean, I, I think we should do some considerations on that as well.
Right now, that's not a city requirement, that's a pass, that's a state's requirement, but yeah, we, we want to have that.
But they don't even care.
Discussion one. Uh, you might be surprised.
We're, we're working on that.
Yeah, we found somebody that agreed with us. They said, I can't, I can't say that I agree with my friends in the other department that mandated that. So we made a little traction. But some of these people are in their retirement. We maybe started off, so anyway, so yeah, we're chipping away at that too.
The other one that I wanted to bring up, that you've gotten emails on is, uh, working to be able to see if we can get the lake level changed to nine feet in the summertime. So that we actually have some water out of the lake to be able to flush with. Not only does it, it create for a better salmon and fish habitat, but it also creates better, um, groundwater sustainability for, for the area. Because the more they drain that water off in the summertime, the, the lower the groundwater gets. So if we can get that changed to where we can actually keep that at nine feet from, uh, I, you know, I'm just giving an example of like from, the first of May to, uh, when salmon season comes and then leave everything the same in the wintertime where it just get dry.
I'd recommend that lower the.
I'd recommend seven feet.
What, uh, potential will survive right now.
But.
With the absolute minimum, agree. But anyway, I mean, it's all open for discussion, but part of the deal is, is I have not been able to get a contact with the, the property owner. Even, even though I know I'm a damn operator, do you have contact?
Yeah, never responds, but yeah, we do, we know who it is.
George. Yeah, well, I know who it is too, and I got his phone number, but he never answered his phone either.
But. Because it's their plan.
I'm trying to get some alternative contacts, uh.
I don't think you can avoid the owner.
One of his daughter.
The other was, um, uh, Department of Fish and Wildlife told me a year ago, they agreed. They said they didn't see any downside to that and they would have a meeting within a month. And it's been fourteen or fifteen months, but I do have contact that said, because that, when we talked to the water manager's office, she goes.
She agrees.
Well, that, no, sort of, because she said, it's a water rights question, who is going to take this water right for another foot? I said, I don't want any water rights, I want you to just operate it different. I'm, I'm not interested in changing water rights. So she's the wrong person for that, because she's all about water rights. It was O D F W that said, we see no down, no downside, you know, with help to fish and recreation. And then the engineers were reported, the fish and the recreation and the water right, all come before the people on the lake, if people believe that. Specifically says, this is not about residents, this is about salmon, fisheries, recreation opportunity. But it helps.
And health of the lake too, because there's a lot of people pulling.
And that's why I support it.
He's like, it's good for everyone. Department of Health and, and water quality is going to add into that as well, so.
Pump maintains the pumps better too.
And they don't care about that, so yeah, don't.
I don't say we're going to, but I'm just saying, it, it maintains the pump better.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So anyway, I mean, we're, I'm trying to work on it, I'm just running into a dead end.
Yeah, because it's not really our thing and I'm not sure they're going to do, jump through any hoops for us. But I do have that other point of contact that, uh, uh, Department of Fish and Wildlife that said, he supported the concept because he was all about fish and salmon ladder and, and operating gaps, because I told him, we really want it, it's good for us, but it's also good for flushing all the sand out of the way and keeping salmon.
Exactly.
He agrees, I understand. And I would basically say what you said, because I haven't been here a year.
No, it's, it's all good, it's just we gotta, we gotta walk through the hoops on and get in there, we can get started with the owner. And that's, that's a tough contract to get, so.
Yep.
If you can work on it a little bit, I'm, I'm working on mine as best I can, but we'll just keep.
I'll find that email, I made a folder with some of those emails from you about that, so. Mostly we can, we can talk about that. Chris, anything else?
I don't have anything.
Larry?
I don't.
Okay.
Can I have citizen input on the septic issue?
Not tonight.
No.
There's no action, that's just for the good of the order, like if you want to run.
Well, for the good of the order, it's just the criteria that's not being followed by others or.
I agree. I agree.
So you have to do yourself, just a little.
I agree.
Follow the criteria.
You're out of order. Yes, sir. Sitting, sitting, gotta go. We'll adjourn that to. Oh, shoot, shoot. But I didn't do it.
I'll have to get you a script for the entire. We're working on that.
Hey, that's why I got you guys. Oh, okay, Susan, most of you adjourn, anybody?
Melissa's seconded.
I will, seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I'm just getting warmed up.
We'll start you at five.